Ralph texted me, he's gonna be a couple minutes later.
Is he? Okay.
Do we have any public comment?
Yes.
We do.
Yeah, you can come on up. So Ralph's coming, you said?
Yep.
Is Tim coming?
I don't think so.
How was your drive?
It was great.
Taking a little bit of a down. Is this a different package Amy than what we got?
Nope.
It's the same.
Okay. It's the signature.
Amy, did we ever get that figured out for the resolution? There was that question that sent us for, um, you know, to replace, to replace Hank?
How are you?
Yes, good.
Hi Ralph, how are you? Good, how are you?
Good, good. Tim's not gonna be here, so.
Okay. Kathleen just had to step out for a second, so. Amy, do you need us to sign in? Is there a sign in for us?
Just the, did you sign in? You didn't?
Uh, no, I didn't. So how's the year been?
Can't complain.
Got a lot of things going on.
Yeah.
Always.
Yeah, you know, it's been, it's been okay, you know, with just a lot of moving parts, there's no doubt about it. You know, with looking at, you know, doing a new, new construction for some administrative offices.
I know.
So it's.
Jealous.
You know, it's, uh, you don't want the headaches that go along with it, 'cause, you know, it's like anything else, you never, never can please everybody, you know? And it's just, everybody's got their own idea and you try to, try to do it the best you could do to make it, uh, you know? But it's, it's been okay, you know, it's just, um, you know, we were, we're, we're trying to get some efficiencies, you know, of having, instead of having like nineteen boilers, we'll have two.
Oh my.
Wow.
And be able to have, you know, one roof instead of having twenty roofs. And it's just, you know, and there's so much to maintain with just little spots here, here, here.
Sure, sure. So Ralph, where is that gonna be constructed at? I mean, I know where you guys are now.
So you know where the sheriff's office is and the hospital, university hospital, they're on twenty-fourth.
Oh yeah, yeah.
So it'd basically be right down the road from there that we would be putting, you know, the administration built in as part.
Is it backed by the engineer?
Yeah, so it would be on the other side of that and never.
Across the street from the hospital.
Yeah, right across the street from the hospital and, you know, it would be a lot more centrally located, but that's now within the Chardon City. So we can't move like everybody down there, so the courts and the, um, the recorder and all those people would have to stay within the city limits. And our original plan was we have thirty-five acres in Chardon City that the commissioners back in nineteen ninety-two, I believe, had, you know, forward thinking, which was good, and they bought this property to one day move everything there. And soon as we did that, we just had an absolute blow up with Chardon City and even within the courts themselves that they want to keep that courthouse, you know? Just 'cause it's aesthetically, it's the center of the county and, or not the center of the county, but it's, you know, the county seat. The county seat and it has, but we would still be in the county seat there too, but they just didn't wanna leave the, you know, architectural design of that courthouse. But we got a quote three years ago for windows because the windows are basically paper thin. And, you know, in order to do the windows, the windows alone would be over four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So it's like, so how do you justify that to taxpayers to say this is the smart, responsible way to do things? It's not. But the residents pretty much spoke that they don't have a problem paying to keep that, you know? So that's what they wanna do and, and even the judges, you know, they don't wanna leave. So, you know, you try to better things and move forward, but obviously sometimes the people have a different view.
Well, I'll call a meeting to order.
To recess.
Yeah, we did that. At ten forty-two?
Yep.
Do you have a motion to approve the June eleventh and October twenty-fourth nineteen?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Rule call, Amy.
Ralph?
Aye.
Um, Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Jim DeBorck.
Here, and yes.
Okay, we all have received the population per diem review and, you know, I think we're gonna have the same conversation we've had how many times?
Oh my gosh, I know, I look at this.
I know, and I think of our last meeting, our meeting before that.
So whatever happened, because I thought we were gonna coordinate a meeting and I think your clerk was gonna do that.
So, so from what I, so the best explanation that I have been given is that we just were never able to coordinate a meeting to be able to have, you know, all three sides get together to try to meet. And then I believe that the judge was going to try to approach, you know, someone also within the, um, within the Portage County, Geoga County juvenile system there to try to come to some things. To the point that now the judge basically has even stopped taking it out of his budget to pay this anymore. So we're maintaining this now directly out of our budget.
General fund.
Out of the general fund. So, I mean, it's basically, it's a, it's a shell game that he's not getting the, the dollars allocated to him, but he believes it's strong enough that he doesn't even wanna fund it anymore, so now we're funding it through the general fund.
Now, I was at a meeting because they, they realized, you know, that obviously we don't have the population there like we used to, which is a good thing, really, but they were looking to repurpose. They actually had someone from the state and they were looking to repurpose a portion of it for like rehabilitation, recovery services, or services for youth. But I had.
It never went anywhere, I don't think.
Not heard anything.
Because last I had heard too was that actually was a good, it was, it sounded like a good plan because they were also gonna be willing to put forth some of the funding to do in that, to eliminate some of the liability and the exposure that you guys have and that we have. And, and then we never heard anything more.
And then they talked about grants for different uses of half the building, but the grants were still being developed. Nobody knew exactly that how they were gonna be written off or what the timeframe is and/or the money, how much.
See, the longer this goes on.
Oh yeah.
It's a money pit.
It totally is, yeah. So I don't know, I, I would have to look at, you know, to, to, and I'm not sure is, um, is the, uh, is this, is our director now from, that, that is overseeing that to be able to give us some numbers? And, and, you know, every year we have a tweak where it's going up higher and higher per day for, you know, per, per juvenile that's staying in there. And I think the last meeting that we had, we came to the conclusion that it was about five hundred and eighty-some dollars a day is what it's costing us to house a child there.
That was the second quarter, I think the third quarter is more.
It is, yeah.
I guess so.
Well, I know they have, I believe it was like, it was like, they have like, I think, was it thirty-one employees or something?
Right.
And they've made no adjustments whatsoever.
What do these employees do? I mean.
So, you know, twenty-four hour operation and then the state has set minimum, minimum standards also that they have to comply with. And I understand that, but at the end of the day, the state also needs to understand that they're putting us at task of dollars that we can't, you know, we, we can't justify. And, and here's the other thing, so there's gotta be the separation of the females and the males. So you, you know, there are certain regulations that they've gotta have so many female guards or female corrections or, you know, employees for that and then so many for male, so it becomes where we're doubling the amount just based on the fact that we have to separate the, the two. So, and the problem is, is it, how do we do this so that, let's say for example, there's one female there every three months, but yet you have to retain female employees for that side? So it's like, it's, it's a real, it's a real juggle and it's a huge amount of money that I don't wanna see you guys pay and we don't wanna pay, you know? So it's tough.
I mean, I look at, at, you know, like the, the spring and the, I mean, we have days that we, we have two kids in there and our budget is two point eight million to run that facility.
Huge. It's huge. And when you look at your sheriff's budget, it's about fourteen million, I believe?
Yep.
So when you think about that, look at the percentage comparison to the sheriff's budget and when you look at what the sheriff's production is and, and job responsibility and you look at this, how do we?
No comparison.
No comparison. You know, to, to look at this that we're at like twenty-five percent of the sheriff's budget to go into something like that, it's crazy.
Well, I guess my question is, what do we do? We, we need an action point.
Well, we need, we need to have the meeting. Now, which judge, was it Judge Grindell that was gonna steer ahead? Because I know he's very adamant.
Oh yeah, he wants out in the worst way and.
Yeah.
And the thing that's sad about this is, is so if you guys recall, I brought this up about four years ago and I got slapped pretty hard from him basically saying, mind your business and.
Yeah, I remember that.
Run your county budget, don't worry about mine. And I basically told him, I said.
A G fund.
Yeah, and I told him, I said, this isn't about me trying to step on your toes, it's, it's responsible dollars. And we're not getting any, you know, we're, and, and I'm looking out for, for your interest and ours also because it's not serving either county route correctly here, you know? So.
I think the tune has changed though.
Oh, totally. And I, and I said, I go, and I, I actually made the comment, I said, where did this come from? Because you, I have stats of letters that he basically told me, do not.
Butt out.
Yeah, butt out. And, and, and I also had a letter from Judge Berger that sent me a, a, you know, a Merry Christmas to saying butt out.
Yeah.
So it's one of those situations where it was just a, a tough situation because I was like, okay, I understand, I, I heard you what you're saying, but it still doesn't correct what we're doing.
But even back then, those numbers were higher than what they are now.
Oh yeah, oh yeah.
And you know, Judge Berger contributes that to, there's a lot of diversion programs to keep kids out of this kinda stuff, which is good, so.
Totally. Well, here's the other thing, so, so where Geoga County, where we, where, where, where the numbers got skewed was when TJ Lane, which was the Chardon school shooter, was housed in that facility for that whole time. So we never, never really had a level one offender that was, was in that, in, in that institution that long of a period of time. Well, just because of the type of case that it was and the seriousness of the crime, he wasn't, he was in there. And so it totally skewed our numbers.
Oh yeah.
And, and, and now all of a sudden, you know, we're, we're kinda like, so, so the one year it looks like we had all this service needed, service needed, service needed, then all of a sudden he goes to prison and now we're back to a weekend, you know, weekend visit at, uh, you know, at the, at the local DH, you know? So it's.
Yeah.
So.
So do we need to try to, to get a meeting together again?
Yeah.
I mean.
I really do, I think that.
We keep kicking this can down and I, it just makes me sick.
So the other thing was is we made a, we made a, we made a contact during their one meeting that we wanted to come in to, to speak to them and they basically, um, you know, told, told our clerk, well, this is, you know, this is our meeting of what we need to do to, to over, overview this. This is not something that, almost as if, if it was a situation, they didn't even want us there. And I'm like, at the end of the day.
They need you, they need us there.
We're the ones that are the funding source for this and you're telling us that you don't want us at this meeting.
And I think we discussed, we need to meet with the board, the board of commissioners.
Yep.
And the two judges. I mean, we, we're all invested in this and should all be part of that conversation.
Well.
And I realize that's, that's the hurdle, is trying to get people together, but, you know, we're gonna make this a priority.
And the thing is, I think there's agreement across the board. And I don't think there's anyone that doesn't agree.
Hundred percent, right.
So.
And I don't know, I mean, I know the board's concerned, but they, they were sorta, um, you know, hopeful when they were start talking about the recovery and the rehabilitation part of, aspect of it. But that seems to have died too. I mean, at least I don't, haven't heard any more on it. And I think Jim, you and I were the only commissioners there at that meeting that.
At the detention center.
Yeah, at the detention center at the time.
And Judge Berger was there.
And, yeah.
Because I think that the, the reality, you know, Vicki, I think that they're, they're, they've seen, the, the both judges, I think, have finally seen what we were talking about four or five years ago. And, and now they're, they're finally realizing that they're, they have some accountability into this because their decision has put our county and your county at, you know, over two and a half million dollars every year. That where could we be allocating those funds?
Yes, yes.
So, I guess, in, in one other thing, so that meeting, when that whole thing happened, I reached out to Judge Grindell's office and, and when they basically had told us that they weren't, you know, they, that they wanted to have their own meeting and that, that we would be able to set something up at a later date, I contacted him and he said that he was going to send somebody or possibly himself to that meeting. And to be honest with you, I never followed up to, to hear what he did or what he didn't do 'cause it sometimes is difficult to work within that office to get answers. And, but I will follow up to see, but I think we just need to pretty much put the, put the foot down and say, this is where we need to have this sit down.
Well, I can say Ralph, at the meeting that Jim and I were at over the summer, um, Judge Grindell was not there, but remember he sent someone there on his behalf?
Okay.
The girl sat, I think, next to you, you know who it is. She works for you guys, I don't know.
No, she doesn't work for us. I think it was Kim Lorry that spoke for him.
Was that?
And she had like three to five questions that she was working off of, a pad.
Okay.
Directly from Grindell's office.
And, and does she work directly for Grindell?
Yes.
But she works for the county, I don't remember.
She's, she's technically their, um, court administrator.
Administrator, okay.
Well, how do we go about this? Do we contact our judges and say, you know what, we need to get, all of us need to get together?
Yeah.
Yep.
And the sooner the better.
Right. But there's no, there's hardly any value to that, to our money being invested.
So I will call, I will call Judge Grindell when I leave here, I will put a call into him.
Please.
And I will just say, you know, we need this done and we need this time set.
I think he'll, he'll definitely be on board.
Kathleen, do you wanna call Judge Berger?
Sure.
Okay.
Let's get this going.
Yep.
Since I'm a new county commissioner, how long have Portage-Jogga been together? What year did this take like?
I don't know how old that site is.
I think it's eighty-four.
Is it eighty-four?
Around that, so it's been a long time.
Yeah, oh yeah, it's been a long.
And like's been said, it's a good thing that we don't have the kids there, so I don't, however, has that changed? We need to change the way we're doing this.
Right. A lot of things, a lot of things have changed since eighty-four.
Exactly, exactly. Okay, so we'll call the judges and try to get this moving. Okay, we have two resolutions.
I have a certain motion for journal entry.
Yeah, I'm going to adopt the journal en- entry receipt of the population per diem review for the first and third quarters 2019 as presented by the superintendent.
Second.
Rule calling.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Ralph?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, to our resolutions, 2020 annual appropriation.
So I'm going to adopt the 2020 annual appropriation for the Portage-Jogga County Juvenile Detention Center, two point eight through five million dollars.
I'll second that.
Rule calling.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
I have a second resolution.
Is there a problem with this one or are we gonna move forward? I think we're okay. I, I thought it looked okay.
I think there was a question, I think your clerk questioned our clerk, but I thought.
Is that the resolve?
Amy, did you get that resolved?
I mean, that's how we do it for Portage.
It's okay to me, so let's go ahead and move to amend the resolution number fifteen dash oh oh three, dated July fourteenth, twenty fifteen, replacing Mr. Darren Boring with Mr. Hank Gibson effective January one, twenty twenty through May thirty-one, twenty twenty.
So, and, so just to be clear, so this is gonna be replacing the, um.
Darren Boring?
I think until our next.
Okay.
Re, re-up of the meeting.
Okay.
So that there's somebody in place for the first part of the year.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll make, or I'll second that.
Rule calling.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Ralph?
Aye.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
And, and on this here, with this recommendation, this came from the judges or did this come, who did, who did the record?
Judge.
The judge did?
Yeah.
And that, that was through Berger?
Yeah, 'cause, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other business?
Just, there's, uh, people from, work, workers from the detention, I just had a couple questions. How many, how many, um, residents are there at the center right now?
Hey, how are you?
Eleven.
Eleven?
Eleven.
And how many are from Jogga and how many from Portage?
I think three from Geoga.
And a from Portage. Okay.
So, so, so your, your, your positions are, are.
I'm the new superintendent.
Okay.
I'm the assistant superintendent.
Okay.
And I'm the administrative officer.
Okay. So you understand the conversation that we're, we're having today as far as the, the dollars and cents and just the.
Concerns.
Concerns that we have with this.
Yes.
'Cause that was the one thing that, you know, we, it, I, you know, I think that sometimes, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be mean saying this, but I understand that there's jobs that are involved in this, in these decisions, but at the end of the day, we still have to be responsible to the taxpayers of making good, sound decisions that, you know, we couldn't, if, if we just run government like a, a charity case, we, we, that's not the way to do it and we can't do it. We need to have some form of a business style direction and, and that was our biggest thing, that we're all in agreement, that it's just, we have to be, we're accountable to the residents of Portage and to Geoga for these funds and to have, you know, two point eight million dollars going out for this operation, it makes it really, really tough for us to justify that to our people, you know? It's just, and, and that's why there's gotta be something that we've gotta be able to do responsibly to bring this thing in check and.
Totally understand. Uh, just for the record, my name's David Robey.
I was gonna say, introduce yourself, yeah.
Again, this is Mr. Lomax, he was the interim superintendent.
Okay.
My prior, prior history is I ran one of the twelve CCFs in the state of Ohio that dealt with kids being sent from the state of Ohio, so I have a pretty lengthy history of working with kids. It's always a budget issue, of course, but you're also talking about the lives of children and being able to provide services for those individuals. There are individuals that are in there that have been alleged to have committed aggravated robbery, that have been alleged to have committed gross sexual imposition, so there is a safety factor to the community that you need to be mindful of. I treat budgets like I treat my family budget. I know the importance of maintaining a good budget and making those particular cuts that you need to be made and doing things smarter and doing things more, um, less government oriented and more let's run it like a business, so to speak, in terms of you're making those decisions based upon understanding that we are all stewards of dollars in this community. So I take that responsibility very seriously. Uh, if you would like, I could update you on the information that you were discussing in terms of that rehabilitation. That issue was the potential of trying to bring in Title I dollars through the Department of Job and Family Services and as soon as they hear a click or a pop on the door and it's secure, that money is no longer available. So it has to generally be an open, secure, open, staff-secure facility. So they even did their due diligence and Mr. Lomax can, can get into it, but, you know, they looked at opening up half of it not being secure and the other half being secure, but that's challenges as well. So, uh, one of my roles in moving forward is, is going to be looking at how we can balance the needs of the community and having a safe, secure place while also being very aware that we all have to be stewards of those dollars and, uh, providing a place where you can detain kids that need to rightfully be detained.
Sure.
But yet also being balanced and understanding that those are dollars that you need to be mindful of spending. So, had some good conversations and I've been there.
So we, right, so, so let me just kind of brief you, so, so my background is in law enforcement, you know, almost over twenty-five years of it. So I, I get and understand that side of it. But what I can tell you is, is I know that, you know, in our county in Geoga, we have a sheriff's office in a, in a safety center that, that brings in about anywhere between two to three million dollars a year in, in bed space. And when we had met originally about three or four years ago, I brought up the idea to say, why can't we reach out to other counties to say we can bring in some, 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 you know, other, other youth that we could assist? Other counties that potentially have issues where their facility is not as nice as ours and doesn't fulfill all the requirements. I mean, we always have hundred percent audits, you know, there are, and, and we, and it's proud for us to hang our hat on it that we've always been within the standards to, to, to have that. So there's a lot of other facilities that surround us that don't have that. So what we looked at is, is why can't we create that same type of position with that? Well, as soon as I mentioned that, what that basically turned into was is, is we are going to get the hardened criminals of Cuyahoga County, of Trumbull County, of Ashdabula County, of Summit County, of who else, whoever we opened it up with, that we were going to have the problem cases come to us so they didn't have to deal with them.
Well, my feedback about that would, from a, from a, that would be a, a small sliver of the discussion that would probably be had.
Right.
What I would indicate to you, based upon my twenty-plus years of working in juvenile justice, that there are other eighty-seven counties with county commissioners that are having very similar discussions that you're having as well. Make, it's less than that because some counties are together sharing detention. But my point is, is that they're having the same discussion because their numbers are low and they're going, how can we justify? I'm from Montgomery County, they build a hundred and forty-four bed facility. They have not opened floors since inception, less than six years ago. So you're talking about, they built an eighty million dollar facility and they have half the population since it opened. So my, my, my feedback to you is, I agree, those are the things that we will certainly be pursuing, absolutely, in conjunction with the elected officials, the judges. But my, but my feedback is, is that the conversations that you're having here, I will guarantee you, those are the conversations that other county commissioners are having. How come our bed space isn't full? Adults, totally different, totally different, you know, there's a different approach in looking at kids. I mean, adults, you know, there's probably less diversion programs for adults than there are for kids. There's some different variations and I'm not saying it's, right, you know, there's a bigger discussion there, but there's a difference in that.
One of the other discussions that, that, that I had had also with, with, um, with, with the original director was to, you know, and I know that Portage is in the process of, of, of completing another addition to their safety center for more jail space. And, and I'm sure that that's not coming at a low price. So what we had discussed was, what was the possibility of us being able to have something where if this facility is too big for us to manage, what could we do to utilize that facility potentially to have it as a secondary location for Portage County to be able to have as like a, a safety, you know, a, another, you know, minimum security or whatever you call it? That could be their work release center or whatever, but now we have it that it could be at capacity that Portage is no longer in a situation that they're having to, to be concerned about that and it becomes a profit center for them to be able to have that facility. Because I, and I'm just saying, and then at that point in time, it, it, I mean, if you wanna talk about preserving jobs, they're gonna have to have people to be able to do that and maybe some more people, but at that point, there's an, there's an income stream that is coming in to that facility. It's just changing it from under eighteen to eighteen. It's just changing it from under eighteen to eighteen and over. And, and if it's something that would be able to be worked with, you know, obviously your sheriff would have to get involved with it, but I think that it's something that nobody wants to sometimes, you know, it's, it's, it's just human nature. We do things today because we did it yesterday and we're gonna do it tomorrow because we did it today.
Are you saying, are you saying that that place would house juveniles?
No, I'm saying that potentially if we're at the point that we have so few juveniles, then let's, let's us look at where we can send or house our juvenile cases and, and re, and repurpose that facility for an adult center. So that now, we know, Portage is not spending the millions of dollars that they're spending because there's a lack of prisoners, you know, on the adult side. So if we have the ability of repurposing that facility for that, we know that our juvenile cases continue to take a downward, you know, run. Now, we have something there that could be purposed for the adult.
For DUIs or something.
Correct.
Low level offenders.
Yeah. You know, to be able to have it as a minimum security, whether that be, you know, their work release center or however it is, and the beauty is, is, is that, that facility is a, it's a, it's a great facility, you know? It, it really is.
I, I hope to leave you with a good sense of this. My style and my approach is to do what is right.
Right.
By balancing all of those factors in hand.
Yes.
Yep.
So, I'm an individual that is gonna advocate. My number one perspective is going to be, is I'm going to be advocating for children
Right.
in Giaga and Portage County. I understand, everybody's struggling with juvenile numbers, it's across the board, I understand that. And I'm committed, and I think our team collectively is committed in doing what's right
Yep.
by all the parties that are involved. So if anybody has an idea, anybody has something that we wanna consider, I'll guarantee you that I will be the first one that's putting it before the judges and letting them consider it and advocating one way or another based upon the soundness that we all collectively believe that we need to approach.
Right.
That's my commitment here today.
Thank you, thank you, yes.
Okay. Yep, thank you.
Nice to hear.
Thank you.
Do you have a card with you?
Uh, I've been there four days. I'm already defending budgets, I don't even have one.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Thanks for coming, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
To solve the two adjournment, are we, are we meeting?
I will second.
Rule calling.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Can you second?
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Vicki.
Oh, you're fine.
Oh, we need them. Yes.
I know, because you guys have another meeting, I was so clumsy on your way here.
Did, did you say we had public comment?
Yes, it's strange.
On this topic?
No, no, no. No, this one's done.
When's our next meeting?
From what, now come?
Well, for, for this.
It's quarterly, so.
Quarterly.
But we need to set up a meeting as soon as possible for the other.
Yeah.
Quarterly.
This one, we only meet, what, quarterly?
It's twice, twice a year.
Twice a year.
So, so let me ask you, so do you think that Judge Berger is kind of on board now with us, with this too?
I think he's seeing the numbers and the dollars and, yeah. His concern, as you said earlier, was that we would get juveniles that were doing adult offenses in there and he didn't wanna mix the two together with, but we can't go on with two point eight million with four kids. I mean, you could stay in a five-star hotel, cheap, you know?
Yep. No. Right. And, and the only thing that I can tell you that is a little bit of concern to me is, is I understand and I'm, I'm totally understanding what you stand as far as the interest of the kids.
Oh, yes, the children first, yeah.
But, that, that there's also, there's, there comes some accountability and responsibility of, you know, to, to be able to do certain things within our means and.
And I, and you made a very good point, Ralph, about sometimes we do things because we did them yesterday, then we do it tomorrow because we did it today.
Yeah.
We have to, you know, it's evolving thing.
Yeah.
Things change, and we have to change with them.
Yeah.
I mean, are we doing exactly what we did in nineteen eighty-four?
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, you've been saying this, we all have, for how many years now?
Been saying it for years, yeah.
And, and it's getting worse and worse and we're still kicking the can. We need to eat and we need to make some tough decisions.
And, and I, I'm just telling you that I think on, on Portage, on Portage, it's kind of, yeah, potentially looking at something like that of a repurpose, it could become a profit center for you guys, truly.
Our jail is.
Yeah. Okay, thanks so much for coming down, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Judge Berger, are these, are, do you, is this your direct numbers also on this?
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, I have all my numbers on it, yeah.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Good seeing everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Yep, Merry Christmas.
Bye Ralph.
See you soon. Sweet one, Ralph.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Unless you're.[1796.34]